Hello, I am Beth Schaefer, member of the League of Women Voters of the greater Dayton area. I am here today with candidates running for the Kettering School Board. The candidates are Jennifer Slanker Kane, Chrissy Richards, Steve White, and Justin LeBrun. We will start our interviews by giving each candidate one minute to tell us about themselves and why they want to serve on the Kettering School Board. And we will start with Jennifer. You can tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve.
Great, thank you. My name is Jennifer Kane, and I would first like to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to share a little bit more about myself. I was born and raised in Kettering, and I am the parent of triplets who graduated from Kettering Fairmont High School in 2019. I've served on the Kettering Board of Education for 10 years. I was appointed onto the board in 2013 to fill the seat that was vacated by Jim Trent, and then was elected in 2015, reelected in 2019, and here we are, 2023. I originally was motivated to board service because I felt that it was important to have at least one board member on the board that had children in the district. So 10 years ago, our children were in the district, and I felt like that parent perspective was missing. Since then, our children have graduated. However, we do have two individuals that serve on the Board of Education that do have children in the district, so that parent perspective is covered. I have a background in banking and project management.
Thank you, Jennifer. Chrissy, would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you wish to serve on the Kettering School Board?
Sure, thank you. And again, thank you for this opportunity just to tell everybody a little bit about myself and the other people as well here. I was appointed to the school board back in January of this year. I had interviewed prior for an appointment, and then they asked me to come back and interview this time, which I was thrilled to do. I was very excited. I have two children in this school district. I have 13-year-old and 17-year-old, and I have a very strong business acumen. So I believe that with my ability for strategic planning and, you know, business experience, I can bring a lot to what really is a business, which is providing, and the customers are our students and our community, so.
All right, thank you. Steve, you have this opportunity now to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you are running for the Kettering School Board.
Thank you, Beth, and thank you to the League of Women Voters. I'm Steve White. I got married into Kettering a little over 25 years ago, and I've had... My daughter graduated from Fairmont High School in 2021. It's in her third year at Ohio State. And my son just graduated this year in '23, and he's joining the Navy at the end of October. And the reason why I'm interested in the school board is, you know, I've had a background in workforce development and, you know, involving the skills, the skilled trades and the colleges, and a lot of career coaching over the years with adults. And I'd like the opportunity to take that experience and bring it into the junior high and high school as just one of the reasons why I'd like to become elected. So I appreciate the opportunity and appreciate getting to know you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. All right, Justin, would you mind telling us a little bit about yourself and why you would like to serve on the Kettering School Board?
Thank you, Beth. So my name is Justin LeBrun. I have currently five of my six kids enrolled in the school system. In addition to that, I'm currently owning my second home since I've been in Kettering my entire adult life, and I have a very big passion for this community. As a professional, my family owns a cybersecurity company, so I have a lot of background in helping establish, run, and maintain that business as well. So I bring a lot of experience from that into this role, too. The main reason I am focusing on trying to get into the Board of Education, and the main desire I want to be on the board is to ensure we can bring in a... Making sure we ensure that we have transparency between the school system and the parents. As a parent myself, that's something I'm very passionate about is communication, and I want to make sure we have those communication channels open so parents feel like they're being heard and have a voice in the system.
Thank you, and thank you all. I will ask each candidate the same questions. You'll have two minutes to answer each question, and then I'll move on to the next candidate and give them two minutes to respond. The first question is, describe the role of a school board member as you see it. And let's see, we will start with Chrissy. Chrissy, would you like to just tell us about what you think the role of a school board member is as you see it?
Sure, and I think this is an absolute great question because I think the community sometimes isn't fully aware of what the role of a school board member is. So we are not involved in the day-to-day operations. As a school board member, we are part of a governing body. So our role is to really be there for the checks and balances, policymaking, things like that. The day-to-day operations is handled by, you know, the superintendent, who is the one that oversees that. So she is like the CEO, you might say, of the school system. So we're a governing body who is there to just make sure that things are running smoothly and that there's checks and balances for the superintendent and the administrators within the school system.
Thank you, Chrissy. Let's see, we'll go on. Justin, could you tell us what you see as the role of a school board member?
Yeah, really just to kind of contain what Chrissy was saying, it is the governing body. We are in position to help put in policies and procedures to ensure the... Not only that the school system is running efficiently and effectively, but also to maintain the security and protection of the children that are there, make sure they have a safe learning environment for all students. And I feel like it really correlates well with roles in cybersecurity, where you have, you know, the CEO, as Chrissy stated, that oversees the day-to-day operations. But the governing body's whole role is to make sure that, you know, the proper direction of the overall school system is heading in the right path. And that's really what I believe we're kind of there to do. We're trying to ensure that our school system and school district is heading in the right direction for all of our students.
Thank you. All right, let's see. Jennifer, describe the role of a school board member as you see it.
School board members are responsible for the hiring and the management of the superintendent and the treasurer. Those are the two direct reports of the school board. And then the district is managed through those individuals. So school board members are not engaged in the day-to-day operations or management of the district. That is the responsibility of the superintendent. And the board members don't get involved in that. We're not the subject matter experts. There are a whole host of professional administrators that have spent their careers in education. But what we do do is we are a liaison. We serve to connect the community to those professionals, to the superintendent and the administrators, who are the subject matter experts. So if a parent has a concern, then we connect that parent with the superintendent and then kind of pass that responsibility of taking care of that concern to the superintendent. We do set policy and direction for the district and serve in the governing role, not a management role.
Thank you. Steve, it's your opportunity to tell us what you see the role of a school board member to be.
Yeah, well, I believe the role of a school board member is first and foremost to serve the citizens of Kettering, the taxpayers. You know, we indirectly serve the administrators and those people that we hire. The school board would support them, but we really do answer to the taxpayers. And, you know, I've heard a lot of great points, and I appreciate that from everyone, especially the two that have the experience on the school board. And, you know, it's just, there's a couple of things that I think we could do better in terms of engaging the community and engaging the taxpayers. I know ultimately, they're responsible to engage the school board and come to school board meetings. But I feel compelled to be intentional, engage the parents, the taxpayers, and really enlist and enroll them to become more involved in communicating what their concerns are, what they'd like to see in the school system, what is possible or not possible. And, you know, two main things that I know parents are concerned about are the focused curriculum for the students that prepare them beyond the school after they graduate, and having a track record, and even knowing how they're doing two years or four years from now. And then the second part of that is developing and updating tools or programs that can help families have confidence in the direction their children are taking, even a couple of years after they graduate high school when it comes to skills or college or the military or whatever. So that's what I believe part of the role is for a school board member.
Thank you. The next question is, as a school board member, how will you address parents' concerns? And let's start with Justin.
Thanks, Beth. In my opinion, the parents' concerns should be one of our top priorities in this role. And at the end of the day, you know, I think the, you know, we as the school board would be, you know, in charge of and carry the burden of making sure we're making decisions for the school system as a whole and everybody that's participating in that school system. But at the end of the day, it's the parents' responsibilities, and they share the burden of picking where they're putting their children and what school they're... How they're schooling their children. And because of that, I think we have to make sure we maintain that communication channel with them, giving them an opportunity to be very, not only speaking and having a voice, but making them feel heard. And so although I don't want to assume I would know all the answers for every single issue they may bring up to us, I do have a history and track record of being able to take a group of people, have good brainstorming sessions, and come out with a decision that is best for everybody and the direction we need to head, and then making sure we're communicating what those decisions are with the parents and the guardians within our school districts. Because at the end of the day, like Steve said, they are the... The taxpayers are the ones that are, you know, directly impacted by the decisions we're making, and we need to make sure that they know the direction we're heading in is something that they're excited about and something they're wanting. So that's just something that I'm very passionate about, and honestly, one of the main reasons I'm running is I want to make sure that as a parent myself or any other parents, they feel like any concerns they have are being, you know, very detailedly heard, and so we can kind of afford together.
Thank you. Let's see. Jennifer, as a school board member, how will you address parents' concerns?
I talked a little bit about that in my last answer, in that board members are really looked upon to be very involved in the community. And as we are out in the community and we're at the grocery store and the gas station, inevitably, we run into parents and families that want to talk about their children and the experiences that they're having, and sometimes they have concerns. And it's very important in that role, in the grocery store aisle, to listen, listen, listen. Listen with understanding as the goal in mind, and help that parent walk through what the situation is and connecting that parent or guardian or family member to the right subject matter expert to satisfy their concerns and to resolve the issue. I do believe that communication will help in that. Communications from the district, from teachers, from buildings and building principals, and district-wide communication. Sometimes parents have concerns because they are unsure of what might be happening. And so the district works very hard in trying to keep those lines of communication open and through all sorts of different methods, as I mentioned, through teachers and through the buildings and district-wide on a weekly basis, to try to keep those lines of communication open, answer any concerns that might be there ahead of time.
Thank you. Steve, how would you address the parents' concerns?
Well, you know, I think that when we were parents with kids in school, all 12 grades, we had many neighbors that were parents. We were involved in sports with parents, and over the years, you know, we heard... We all had various concerns, and sometimes it was just at the individual student level. But sometimes there were concerns regarding maybe decisions the schools or the school system was making, and I would always ask them, well, have you been to a school board meeting? And have you contacted? And if they haven't, you know, I would challenge them to contact the school board. And I just appreciate what Justin was saying earlier with his experience, you know, with, it sounds like with communication and everyone for that matter. I think just being more proactive with offering proactive means for parents to be able to communicate beyond the grocery store, which is great, and that's very organic. But enhance and improve our system of communicating and being able to collect data from our parents and have it coalesce and really mine for things that we as a school board could discuss and bring to the attention of the administrators and the teachers and resolve some of these issues. But I think the main thing is just provide a better way of communicating back and forth and encouraging parents to not take for granted those in leadership, you know, and really challenge us, challenge the school board, challenge the administrators by communicating and being willing to open up and address their concerns.
Thank you. Chrissy?
So, you know, since I've been appointed, since I was appointed on the board in January, I have to say I have been thrilled and pleased to see how engaged our parents are in the community. They really do show up, and they do express concerns when they have them. I feel like there's a lot of openness, whether it's via email, whether it's, you know, coming to a board meeting, whether it's, you know, when you're out and about. But I have found that parents have been wonderful about coming forward with concerns when they have them. Listening is key, you know, sitting, letting them speak, letting them feel like they're being heard, and then you take the action after that. And so ultimately, the action taken often depends on what the concern is. Majority of the time, it's going to be connecting that parent with the right administrator or the right teacher, the right counselor, that's really going to be able to help them work through their concerns. But sometimes it's a little bit more urgent, and you have to act much more quickly. So it just depends on the concern there. But I will say that the other piece of being that liaison between the community member and administrator or teacher is also then a follow-up. So just to ensure that if I've connected two people, I've connected a parent to somebody in the district, that I follow up with both the person that I've connected them to as well as the parent, just to make sure that they feel like the situation was resolved or an outcome was reached.
Thank you. Our final question is, what do you see as the most important issues facing your school district? And we will go ahead and let Steve start that.
Thank you. We know over the last few months, as I've been involved in, you know, running for school board, I have talked to many parents and taxpayers, and I think a few of the main issues are, you know, what are we spending money on? How do we determine the priorities? I didn't get a sense that, except for maybe a very few, they had a real concern over spending. But I just think that they're unaware, and again, I challenge them to be more involved in some of the school board meetings or go up and look at the minutes. I think sometimes they... I've had parents tell me that curriculum, and not just the curriculum, but programs and communicating the idea of what happens after high school. Because I've just personally met with over the years many families, many students who agreed, wanted to do something, go to college, but two or three years later, they're kind of in limbo, and they don't know what they want to do. And I feel like that's a main concern with some of the parents I talk to. And, you know, parents' rights, there's been some concerns over some of the social issues. You know, it's not that we have a problem with that, but it's some people feel disconcerted. And, you know, I just think that it's... We have to have more parent involvement, more taxpayer involvement to update themselves and to communicate with us, which is why I believe we need to provide more proactive, you know, chatting or update our communication systems and our website.
Thank you. All right. Chrissy, what do you see as the most important issues facing your school district?
You know, I mean, there are several that we, you know, need to be aware of and look at and focus on. I think funding is probably one of the top. There is always going to be limited funding when you're talking about a school system, and it's the, you know, role of the board to really just to ensure that we're being good stewards of our taxpayers' money. So what, you know, we... That is where we need... That's again, the checks and balances that we're there. So, you know, asking the right questions, getting the right information as decisions are being made, really talk through what is the benefit of implementing a program versus, you know, weigh it out a little bit and really look at what is the best way for us to manage our funding? Because it is limited, and it will continue to be. I think that is going to be an ongoing thing forever as far as funding for public school. We also, you know, need to be aware of security for our kids. You know, we've done a lot over the last several years to improve security within our school buildings, and I think that's always going to be something that we want to be aware of because we want our kids to be able to learn in a very safe environment. We want them to feel safe, and so that is something that we always are going to need to keep our eye and focus on. I think technology is another thing. It is moving so fast, and it is really important that we stay in front of it as much as possible to make sure that, you know, as it is advancing, as a school system, we are advancing with the technology, but we're also managing the technology there in the hands of our kids.
Thank you. Justin, what do you see as the most important issues facing the school district?
Thank you. I would... The number one issue, when I've talked to several parents in my community, in my local area, I'm pretty vocal and chatty with people when I see them. The number one I consistently hear is feeling like there's a lack of transparency, feeling like, especially with the climate we're in, the cultural climate, with socially polarizing topics that are coming up, whether it's how we handle bathrooms for transgender people or how we're doing. There's a lot of people that are concerned about what books are in the schools. Some don't want them banned, some worry that we're too progressive in there. There's just a lot of concerns in those socially polarizing areas. And the concerns I'm hearing is parents feel like the school system as a whole is not being transparent on the decisions we're making around those topics. And that, as myself as a parent, has been one that I was concerned as well because we can all understand how difficult it is probably to make a decision on those topics that impact so many families. It's definitely not something to be taken lightly. But at the end of the day, whatever that decision is, parents have a right to know and need to know what direction we're going in because they need to be able to do what's best for their children as well. And so that's what I think the biggest concern is there. I do believe funding is something a lot of parents have on their mind, but I don't think that's the top priority. I think a lot of times we have, as a community, we never have an issue. It doesn't seem like to pass a levy. They seem to pass pretty regularly. I think if we open up transparency on what that money is going to, a lot of times will be helpful. But I think the funding might be secondary to what most people's concerns are right now. And to echo something Steve said, I think one of the top things we can do is update our communication channels because, yes, you know, people can come to board meetings and review notes, but in this day and age, a lot of people are super busy, and I think having better forms of communication to keep them informed would be helpful.
Thank you. Jennifer, it's your opportunity again to ask what you think is the most important issues facing the school district.
Great, thank you. I agree with a lot of the answers that have been said. And when you're the fourth person that answers this question, a lot of those answers have already been said. One thing that we did not... None of the candidates have talked about so far is mental health, the mental health challenges that children face on a daily basis. And research has shown that children that have some mental health issues, those issues can hinder their learning and growth. And it is our responsibility as a district to make sure that every student feels safe and secure when they come into our buildings and that they are supported. It is our responsibility to make sure that they get the most out of their school day, that when they arrive at our buildings, that we support them so that when they are there during school, during class, that they are taking advantage of every learning opportunity possible and that they're making the most of their school day. The district has done, I believe, a great job and is very forward-thinking with regards to social-emotional learning and helping those students and support those students with our We Are Firebirds campaign, the Responsible, Respectful, and Safe, the different prevention programs and Hope Squads. Mental health for students is a constant challenge, as well as safety and security, and making sure that our buildings are safe for our students and our staff. That is a continual challenge. And so in addition to some of the other answers, I would say, mental health for students and safety and security.
Thank you. Okay, then, we would like to provide each candidate with a minute for a closing statement. And let's go ahead and start with you, Justin.
Well, thank you again. Yeah, so again, going back to a lot what we've already talked about, my whole desire for getting on the board is to open up that transparency and those communications. I do love what Jennifer said about mental health. That is something that's been important to me, my life as well, because when I was in school, that was something that was very difficult, was not feeling a part of something or not feeling like you belong, and it can really be damaging. And so that is something we have to focus on for all students. We have to make sure all students feel like, you know, they have a place within our school system, and they feel safe. And those aren't easy to figure out, and that's why I think communication between us and the parents is important because I think as a community, we can move together better than a small group of people trying to, you know, make all the decisions themselves. I think that communication can be very key. And the last thing was going back with what Steve had said and want to echo that again is finding newer and better ways to open up those communication channels.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Steve, you have an opportunity to make your closing statement.
Okay, yeah, you know, back in January or February, when I was being interviewed for an open position, I really did appreciate Jennifer and the heartfelt sincerity that came out regarding mental health. That really touched me during that interview, and that does touch my own daughter, third year in college, just, you know, things that we weren't aware of that have come to light. It would be nice to have something that can equip parents, and as their kids graduate, they know what to do or who to talk to and to carry on for that mental health and not just in our school system. But, you know, I just look at this as an opportunity. You know, I see three other, I think, very highly qualified people, and I feel like I'm qualified. And I think if we're going to create awareness together, just kids, voters, or people that are going to watch this or read about what we've written and give them... uh, and, and give them a, a, a variety, uh, help them to think about what's important. And if that's my takeaway for this is that we're going to create awareness together and, and win or lose. You know, I'm very, uh, grateful for that and grateful to have heard from each and every one of you today. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, Jennifer, uh, you'll have an opportunity to, uh, make your closing statement now.
Thank you. Uh, again, thank you to the, the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to share, uh, some more information. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, I have been on the Board of Education for 10 years. A lot has happened in those 10 years. A lot of great things, um, have happened and continue to happen in the district. And Kettering has, Kettering Schools has a reputation of being a leader, um, someone that's at the forefront of innovative programming and curriculum and opportunities for students. And I would like to see that continue. Um, there, we have many, many, um, successes in our academics and student achievement. And, um, we're continually proactively addressing student mental health and safety and security and absenteeism. Um, but there's always the time, uh, there's always an opportunity to improve. Uh, I would ask for your vote in, uh, November to maintain, uh, what is currently happening on the school board, uh, for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Chrissy?
Uh, you have your opportunity now to, to make your closing comments. Wonderful. Great. So, um, just circling back again to what the role of a board member is. Um, I truly believe that my leadership experience, um, throughout my career, I have been, um, I'm in an executive level position now within the healthcare industry. Um, and, and I've been with the same organization now for over 19 years. And I think, um, what I have learned is, is I, I do have strong leadership skills and being in a board position, that is what you are. You are a leader. You're leading, um, the CEO and you're, and the trainer of the school district and you're providing them support and guidance and asking all the right questions. So I think that is really important is as we are, um, asking them to lead and be the, you know, the manager of the day-to-day operations, that we're asking the right questions to make sure that we do maintain the excellence that we already have within our school district and continue to, to, um, build upon that. So please vote for me in November. I would appreciate it.
Well, thank you all for your participation today, uh, and good luck in your campaigns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
The League of Women Voters encourages all candidates to run issue-oriented campaigns. And our goal is to educate the voting public and to strengthen our electoral political process. The annual voter's guide will be distributed in mid-October in the Dayton Daily News, the AIM Media, suburban papers, and at local libraries, schools and businesses. Early voting for the upcoming election begins on October 11th at your Board of Elections, or you can request an absentee ballot. However you decide to vote, your opinion matters only if you do vote and help democracy work. The League also wishes to thank the wonderful staff at M, at Miami Valley, uh, Communications Council for their assistance today.